Thank you all so much for coming this evening. Our backs are to you simply so we can see the kids do their special thing. Before we begin, I'd like to read a recording notice. We want to share that we will be recording tonight's meeting. We do plan to share this recording publicly in the event that a student, parent, staff, or community member would like to know what was discussed. If you do not wish to be recorded, please let us know at this time. Alright, great, thank you. Then I will call this meeting to order at 6 o'clock tonight. And I am going to turn it over to our students for the pledge allegiance.
Please stand. If you don't have your flag, please take them off. I don't have a flag. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, students, very good job. The first item on our agenda this evening is a quick check of the board calendar and public records requests. Board, is there any comments? Questions? All good? Alright, then with that, I will return it back to our OPS leadership team to begin the night's presentation. Good evening, welcome, board. We are so excited to have you here for the OPS board highlight. Kristi Onwood, I get to be the principal at Oring Primary. Erin Owers is our assistant principal. And this truly is the highlight of the year so far. Last night was fantastic, read across Oring, but we are so excited to get to showcase our students and staff. And the focus is really on the work around our four goals of our school improvement plan. But what you're gonna see tonight is the data they work, our students and staff are doing that really are elevating the learning at Oring Primary School. So, to start us off, I'd like to welcome Mrs. Dennett and our kindergartners.
Good evening. I'm Mrs. Dennett, the music teacher here at OPS. And tonight, we have our kindergartners from Mrs. Lyons' class. And we are going to share some art we made, and poetry, and singing. And it's all about how our gifts and talents we have inside us can change the world. Hope you enjoy.
My own two hands. I can change the world. With my own two hands. Make a better place. With my own two hands. Make a kinder place. With my own two hands.
And I think just meeting adjourned. Nobody wants to follow that. I already apologized to the adults that do. No, we have other students who are gonna share the learning. We're excited to have them. Thank you, Mrs. Dennett, thank you, Mrs. Lyons' class. You're actually gonna get to see them again. So we wanna just take a moment to share the vision for our school this year is really about making sure that Oring Primary is safe, welcoming, inclusive, and equitable. So that has been the foundation of all of our learning sessions for staff, our classroom opportunities, and making sure that every student that you saw here, as well as the 560 that aren't out here, have those opportunities to be heard, seen, known, and loved at our school. So tonight, we wanna highlight those things for our kids. And to do that, we have asked some of our student council members and Mrs. Smith to come up and share some of their work that our students have been leading in our school this year. So Mrs. Smith is our third grade teacher, she's also our student council advisor. And Mrs. Smith, how many students do we have in student council this year?
About forty-two.
About forty-two third graders. So we have a few that volunteered to come tonight and talk about the activities that our student council has been doing.
Hi, my name is Addie. I like student council because we get to help people. Valentine's for veterans is one of my favorite activities because we get to make veterans feel joy.
Hi, my name is Stella. I'm a member from student council. I love to help people and plan for student council. We ran a clothing drive in December and took a carload of clothes to the Tacoma Rescue Mission and made posters around the school. I felt really happy to make it home.
Hi, my name is Halle. I am a member of student council. I like student council because I like helping others and being a leader. In February, we had a food drive and we gathered 452 pounds of food. Everybody in student council was so happy. Our goal was 2,000. We didn't make it, our goal, but there is always next year.
Thank you. Okay, can we hit the next slide?
Hello, everyone, I'm Megan Barbara. I'm the school counselor at Oring Primary School. And I'm gonna talk about our morning assembly. So every morning, we get basically probably half of our school in here while the other half is at breakfast for about 10 minutes. And it used to be kind of just a space to keep the kids safe while they wait for teachers. But we shifted this year for it to be more student-centered. Going back to that see me, hear me, know me, love me. And so some of the activities we get to do are minute-to-minute. It's on Tuesday, so we call up students from each grade level to compete. This week, we did, it was like a candy stacking. So they had their arm out and stacked as many Smarties as they could in one minute. And it's been really fun to see. So far, second grade is our winner, they've won every single time. But I can't wait to see kindergarten, some of the other grades win. We also do Would You Rather Wednesdays. So our students come up and get to answer questions from Ms. Curtis. Like, would you rather meet a Disney princess or a Marvel character? And then you get to see the gym vote, which is super fun. And then another one we do is Funny Friday, which is a pretty big hit. And I have students submit jokes to me. And then ideally, they would come up and read it. But unfortunately, you have to listen to me read our joke today, even though it's Thursday. So one of our students, Tucker, in Ms. Green's class submitted a joke that says, "Can I tell you a joke about cats?"
Yes.
I'm just kidding. So that was one of our jokes that was submitted and will be shared tomorrow in front of our students. And next. The other slide I'm gonna talk about is our student recognition. So along with our second step curriculum, we also have Purposeful People, which teaches our students about character traits to help build their character so that they can be amazing future citizens and leaders. And so each month, they learn about a different character trait. So this month is cooperation. But some of our other months, if you wanna look, they're on the door over there. We have responsibility, empathy, creativity, and those are just a few. So in their class, all month long, they learn about what that looks like, it sounds like, and how to be that character trait. And so each teacher will go at the end of the month. And then we get a hold of an assembly to celebrate those students. And we break it up into two assemblies so that we can invite families and parents to come in and celebrate with us and see our love for those students and share their love as well, along with our little cougar. And that's been a really big hit, taking pictures with the cougar after the ceremony. And yeah, thank you. Nice to see you, everyone.
So we are going to be sharing a little bit about each of our four SIP goals and what that's looked like in action. So Erin and I are each gonna talk about two of the goals. But we're just going to briefly share some of the progress that we've made since sharing our actual SIP plan with you in December. You're just gonna hear some brief nuggets. We got to share that plan. We could talk for hours and hours about the goal. We'd be happy to do that if you wanna come on by and we can go to classrooms and do that. But tonight is really about just a couple of key activities that we've done for each of those goals. And then, after we share, we're going to bring out our kids and they are going to show you the work that they've been doing. Erin and I can tell you, but seeing it in action, Mr. Hudsonbeeler, Mr. Redd, Mr. Lee get to come for classroom visits. And today, they came and we went to a kindergarten classroom and saw math, partners to seven. We went to a first grade classroom where they were talking about three adding story problems. And so seeing our kids doing their learning and their math talk, their math vocabulary, just doesn't compare to hearing the two of us talk about it. So our kids will be sharing that with you. So Ms. Owers is gonna talk about goal number one.
Hi, good evening. So I feel really lucky to be talking about our first goal, which is about building learner agency through meaningful goal setting. And when our staff decided to have this particular goal, we were really gonna be focusing on what meaningful goal setting meant for each teacher and for each student. Because it's really easy to set a goal and not have a kid be a part of it. But we wanted it to be really important to the students and have them be able to talk about what they were focusing on. So that's the kind of theme that you're gonna see. The first goal that every student in our building has is a reading goal. And we partnered with Scoops. Scoop, there it is. And so we have a coupon for them. Once they reach their first reading goal, they get to put their name on a scoop and trade it in with them for a scoop coupon. This is one of, we love this picture. Because this student in particular has not felt successful at school until this year. And he, you can see that his goal is going up and up and up. And I can tell you right now, if we probably took that picture, if we had it more filled in, it's way higher now. And he loves it, he loves coming down and showing us, that's reading fluency. This is really great. One of our teachers, Ms. Olney, wanted to make sure that there was a visual representation of meaningful goal setting. And you're gonna learn a little bit more about this staircase and a little bit has to do with our Bookworms curriculum. And so she had students color in the steps that they were on in our Bookworms curriculum. And then write underneath it what their goal was and where they wanted to be. So these students, but I would practice my A-R-I-R-E-R-U-R-O-R blends, okay? And that's right where they wanna be, that vowel consonancy. This next student said, "I can learn my long vowel words and short vowel words. I can read about two letters making one sound. And I can look at the way it ends, but it has an E." I love that it's in their words. And you can see that each one of these students is at a very different spot on the stair step. One of the great tools that we've had here is Panorama. And I'm sure you've been hearing about that. And so one of the social emotional surveys that our teachers do helps us gather data around three specific characteristics. It's great to get data, but what we do with it is more important. And one of the great outcomes that we get to have with this tool is specific lessons that are tailored to that characteristic based on deficits, where the tool will identify where there's need. So this is just one example of how we're kind of increasing knowledge and depth in those characteristics, specific to agency and growth mindset in third grade. That's really an area that we've been focusing on. And this is an example of one of those activities. Now it's time for Kristi.
Thank you. So goal number two is around improving student learner outcomes. And this year, we, as you know, adopted Bookworms. And so we talked about if we were gonna do that, what's one area that we could really focus on? So ensuring that teachers know that Bookworms curriculum in and out. And in December, we talked a little bit about we were still living in the five-day-at-a-time because that's what that book cycle is. So one of our key goals was really around January 30th. That's a no-school day for students. So families, while your kids are at home, staff, we're really focused on, there's four modules in Bookworms. So at that time, we were just beginning module three. And what we focused on with the help of our ELA TOSAs is unpacking that culminating task, that end task of unit three, and that idea of backwards design. So if we know what students are supposed to do at the end and we really deeply understand those standards, what are the lessons from beginning to end that help ensure that kids are meeting those standards and that teachers understand what they need to highlight and elevate? Bookworms is three 45-minute reading blocks. So I don't know, I've been in education for 20 years and we have never spent three 45-minute blocks a day on reading. But I've also seen kids grow to love the activities, which you're gonna see tonight, some excitement around that. They're really thinking about, there are some places where teachers need to make adjustments and maybe cut some things because we're still learning routines. We need to know what we can adjust and cut. You can't just willy-nilly do that. We wanna make sure that we're doing that in meaningful ways and making adjustments. I know that you cannot read this, but what teachers were working on is really going through, looking at the lessons and how they lead kids to be successful in that culminating task based on the standards. So that was that January 30th day. And then the other thing that team leads, because they were very active, our staff in helping us set the SIP goals and what their action steps would be to help us achieve those goals, is team leads. We meet a couple of times every month. And team leads were really vocal about wanting to have some vertical time to do vertical sharing. Kindergarten wanted to know what first grade was doing. First grade wants to know what kindergarten was doing and what second grade is doing. So on the 30th, we had some time where we did that. And we carved out, we talked about what kinds of questions. But more importantly, teachers brought student work. They had some writing samples, they had their Bookworms study books. And what I loved is that it became this really organic time. It was kind of the end of the day. And if you've ever been at the end of the day of PD in January, it's the end of the semester. This was one of the liveliest times. And this picture doesn't quite capture it, but teachers are standing around, they're showing workbooks, they're showing student work. And they're like, oh, okay, that makes sense. Oh, we do this. And so if your kids are, so kindergarten and first grade have their heads together and they're planning, and they've asked if we can come back together in June? Because now they wanna see, they see where kids are at mid-year, they wanna see what kids are at in June. And so they have an idea. And they were talking about, oh, if you saved a piece of writing, we could see where our kids are at. And so there was some great collaboration between our teams and excitement. We don't have formal posters or charts or graphs that we filled in. There will be that opportunity to do that. But the excitement around this was just the talking and the collaboration between our teams in a really meaningful way. So a ton of excitement around this. And then we're going to see in just a little bit, some shared reading. And so you'll see Ms. Record is one of our first-year teachers. She will be over in this area. And her class is gonna highlight some word study. And then Ms. Cavallieri is going to, her second grade class is gonna highlight choral reading and why it's so important that kids have the opportunity to choral read together as a class and the pacing and what that repetitive reading does for our kids, which is a new skill that we have not previously done before. It was often teachers reading and kids listening or kids reading. So you're gonna see a different skill that we've used in the past. So that'll come in just a few minutes. And that was Owers. Okay, this goal is something we're so proud of here. And so I'm gonna get our specialists to really start it out and I'll go ahead and finish it.
So I'm Whitney Curtis, I'm the MTSS specialist for OPS. So I really work on making sure we have systems of support in place and supporting teachers and students and everyone. For our tier-one system, we've really focused this year on our social emotional learning. We've always had second step for our curriculum. This year, we went digital. In going digital, we were able to bring the specialists in too and tie them into what kids are learning in the class. So now they're getting reinforcement in technology, library, PE, and music. And so we're all using the same vocabulary, the same visuals. It's been really unifying for all the kids. We also, in the first picture, created calm-down spaces for every single classroom. In the corner over there, you can see our PE version. But it is a place within the classroom that students can self-select to calm down and reset. Every class has a bin with tools. And then I went and met with each classroom, walked them through the steps of how to use it, what it's for. And then with the calm-down spot, we also have think sheets that maybe a classroom reset for them wasn't enough. And so they go to a buddy room and they reset again. And they fill out a think sheet, which is a reflection of how they're feeling, how they show their feelings, and then how they're going to restore when they go back into the classroom. And then we keep those think sheets and we try and check in with the students later. Just, we're trying to really reinforce the social emotional and that your feelings are valid and that we're gonna work through them. So that is our big kind of tier-one focus. And I've been working with Erin and Megan, our counselor, and Stephanie, our reading interventionists, are creating bi-monthly newsletters for the staff that go over things happening in MTSS, reminders. We try and give some positives in the building. So the one you can see is how many Cougar Cat or student recognition we wrote, which was 2,000, that's a lot. And so we send this out twice a month. And I've started using ParentSquare, so I'm still figuring it out. And so that's kind of where we're at with tier-one and shifting towards tier-two.
So tier-one and tier-two are well on their way to being systematized. But my point of pride this year is the work we've done with our special education department. And that's considered our tier-three department. So we have really pushed hard and they have been willing to enter into a lot of, I guess it would be considered risky for them, new ground. And using data points, not just from the special education evaluation, but also from Panorama data to develop social emotional and adaptive goals for their IEP based on the Washington State social emotional standards. And that might sound like it's not a big deal, but it's a big deal. And so here's something that I really wanna show you. That work has been guided by developmental appropriateness. We talk a lot about cultural responsiveness, the concept of UDL or universal design, and then also trauma-informed approaches. Almost all of the kids that we work with in special education that are on IEPs for behavioral, all sorts of behavioral reasons are dealing with one of those four things in great ways. So Washington State actually has six social emotional standards. And they're the exact same ones that we're working on as a school district. That's probably not coincidence. And so it's been great to see how they align in tier-one with what Whitney brings to us and really emphasizes and what Megan brings along in tier-two in counseling. And now, I can confidently say, our IEPs are being aligned in tier-three as well. Not just in broader categories, but also with our benchmarks and specific goals. Here's an example of self-efficacy, because that's what's in our C-SIP plan. You can see that in early elementary, something we focused on even in today's IEP, with adult assistance, I can identify steps to achieve a personal goal or complete a routine task. That's a very individualized concept. That's different than what we did at the whole building. And so the IEP team will really break that down and make sure that it's an appropriate goal for that student. It's really exciting for me because it's anchored in OSPI work and CASL standards. And it really ties through all three levels for our building. And there's just more positive recognition in the second grade. We love that picture of the cougar. She's fun. We also have the opportunity for our students who get Cougar Cat drawing once a month to have river floats with Officer Boone. Personally, I think he probably just wants river floats. I don't know. He does such a great job with them. There's a student in the picture on the right. We don't see her smile much. So Kristi and I were just talking about that. That's a great picture of her, we're gonna keep that one. Okay. Okay, and we have the opportunity to write a fourth goal. And this one is around differentiated instruction, which is the third component of that Bookworms piece. And that ties in the individualized goal and individualized instruction. So students are individually assessed. And we had some new learning this week, thanks to Mr. Lee. The IDI stands for Informal Decoding Inventory. So we're adding that to our acronyms and definitions. But then they're placed in a small group and have the opportunity to work through skills. So Stephanie Stephenson is our intervention, reading interventionist. So Stephanie Stephenson is our intervention, reading interventionist, lab teacher. She is going to briefly explain, because again, we could spend a long time, but she's going to briefly explain that stair step that you saw our first graders, where they were setting their goals and how we work through that, and a little bit about some of the really exciting data that we are seeing from, we talked about at our initial plan where we shared in December, and we told you that we would be updating. So today, we are really excited, the growth that we get to see from our students.
All right, I'm Stephanie Stephenson, reading interventionist here. So this is the stair step she mentioned earlier. And this is our different DI groups, DI's Differentiated Instruction. In a perfect world, that bottom stair step would be kindergarten. The second stair step would be first grade and on up. Obviously, we have a wide spectrum of students, and that's not always the case. That's what we're working towards. So a couple, to start, like basic alphabet knowledge. So there's two groups. We have a three-week cycle at 1 through 15, another three-week cycle following 16 through 30. And it's just the alphabet broken up. And we want kids to know certain letters to move on to the next stage of that. We're working on first sounds, obviously identifying the letters, finding words that start with those letters, along with tracking words in sentences. As we move up, we have vowel consonant E, so also known as magic E or silent E. Where kids are working on recognizing those patterns and spelling and reading passages with us every day. All the way up to our vocabulary comprehension, which is our at-or-above-grade level readers that are reading fluently. And we're working on exactly what that says, finding some vocabulary words in books along with some comprehension questions to help them further their reading skill. So highlight, this is a kindergarten highlight. You can see round one, which for kindergarten was about November, because you don't start DI instruction until about nine or 10 weeks in. We had 76 of our kindergartners in that beginning alphabet knowledge. So they had very little letter knowledge, all the way to around four, which was just about last week. And we have 54 of our kindergartners in dictated sentences. And I'll show you what that is. But in order to get to dictated sentences, they have to have been proficient in all the other levels first. This was one of our kiddos that just got into dictated sentences. So just a beginning level. There isn't really an assessment for dictated sentences, but the kindergarten team and I were trying to figure out how we could track progress or see where kids were at. So we had them write some sentences for us. So it was our first level. This one, I had six, I remember what that one was, and 10 bugs. The fat cat sat on the bed, I think that one was. A middle level. You can see this kiddo, the fat cub hid in the den. And I had six dogs and 10 bugs. So this made us look at, realize in these dictated sentence groups, we want to make sure we're focusing on sentence formation as far as where our capital letters go, along with where our letters go. And this was one of our more advanced kiddos. I threw a fun word in there. It was cow. For kindergarten, they wouldn't have known. If you look from the bottom, says, "The cow bung on the red went on." We were able to see some of our more advanced kiddos, how they phonetically thought they would spell cow. Have you not learned that spelling pattern yet? So some highlights for first grade. You can see at the beginning, we had quite a few kids in those, in what we would call the kindergarten-level skills. And now we have a big chunk of them inching towards the end of their first-grade skills. So it's really fun, because if you look, you can definitely see the movement across as we go. Second grade. So we had at the beginning here 19 kids in that using letter sounds. And now we're down here to 60, 70 kids that are at the end of that spectrum. Third grade here. And that FAC and VAC. So FAC is fluency. So it's kids who are reading at, or have the phonetic knowledge to read at grade level, but just aren't reading at a speed or words per minute that we want for that grade level. So in those groups, they're working on reading chorally and getting that reading level up a little bit. VAC is vocabulary comprehension, yeah.
So when I just go back to that and highlight, we really are celebrating, like the using letter sounds, we had 15. And you can see as we move across those rounds, we're getting to zero. We're moving all of those kids up in progress. And so we're celebrating. And as Stephanie shared, she, I was sitting in the kindergarten PLC the other day. As Stephanie brought those writing samples in, and we're shuffling through and talking about what we noticed in their writing, and celebrating the graph that Stephanie showed for kindergarten. She had that up on the screen. And for our kindergarten team, that's a huge celebration. I then went down to first grade, and we put that up on the screen. And first-grade team was able to see the kids that are coming to them next year and where they were already at in February. And so there's huge celebrations there. So we are excited to bring our kids out. They have been coloring and doing some activities as they prepare. You saw their energy at the beginning. We figured that they were not super excited to sit here and listen to us talk, because they do that all day long. So we are going to bring them in. And as we do, we have a little protocol for our board and our cabinet. So can I have our student council come on up? They're going to help hand some things out. So here's how it's going to work. We have three rounds, three groups. We're going to have five-minute rotations. We're going to ask you to move around clockwise. And then we're going to ask you to hold your celebrations and questions until the end as you rotate. We're going to, student council is going to bring you a piece of paper to write your thoughts down on, so that you don't have to keep those in your head. And then you can bring those back. After the three rotations, we're going to bring all of the kids and the staff up here. And then we can, you can share your celebrations and your questions for all the kids together, so that we have a chance to bring them all up. So our student council members are bringing you... Okay, Ms. Lyons group, if you're back with Ms. Lyons, come on up for a second, all together. You don't have to do it by yourself. Come on up. Ms. Lyons is going to join us up front. Ms. Cavalieri's group, join us up front. Come on up, Charlie. Okay, did we get everybody? Ms. Barbara, come on up front. We're almost done. So we'd love to give the board, I know we asked you to do a really tough thing, and hold your comments and thoughts in our cabinet. We just want to give you a minute. If you have a celebration or a question for this amazing group of learners, we'd love to give you just a minute to give some thoughts as we wrap up our highlight. Well, first, I'd just like to say thank you to all of you marvelous students. You obviously are listening very well in classrooms, and I loved to watch your presentations. I was so involved in watching you, I didn't really take a lot of notes. But the one thing I will say is you all, every single one of you, look like you were having a good time learning. And I think that's amazing. So thank you, all of you students and the teachers as well. Thank you so much.
I just was so impressed with how hard you were to set your goals and to reach your goals and how you're helping each other. And I just want to say what an incredible job you're doing and working to improve as readers and staff. You were doing an excellent job helping and supporting. Your language was just so positive and affirmative and just encouraging. So thank you for all the hard work you're doing. And students, you are doing an amazing job.
I would like to recognize each of you for doing all the activities. You were all on, like staying a part of the activity and doing what you needed to do to practice those important words in your reading. And I also saw in all of the groups, someone helping someone else. And I love that compassion and that teamwork and helping your friends along through the learning too. So great job, and thank you so much for showing this to us tonight.
I wanted to say thanks for showing us such great agency that you were, I did not have a problem coming here late in the day and showing your skills in front of strangers. Wow, lots of people can do that. So good for you. And you really know your phonics skills. That's great. I really heard a lot of phonemic awareness and blending, and I know your different, you know your different groups of vowels and consonant blends. So good job on that. And I wanted to say, not everybody knows, thank you, the newest teacher who's room is up there on the stage, coming and joining us like a real veteran when you just started. So I know how scary that can be. Thanks. And I love the bumblebees.
Thank you. Just one last comment. Thank you to our students and staff for showing up. Thank you, families, for coming tonight and joining us. We could not have done this without you. I am so proud of you. Ms. Albers and your teachers are so proud of you. You guys just helped us show our school board what amazing learners cougars are. Thank you. You guys did an amazing job. Can we give them a round of applause? And one last highlight before, we've kept them for a really long time, longer than we intended, but so many great things to share. One thing that we found out just a couple of weeks ago is we had our highly capable nominations. Ording Primary is preschool through third grade. We had 31 Kinder through third grade nominated to take the highly capable assessment. I believe that's the highest number that we've ever had nominated and the highest for any of our districts. So we are so excited to see our students just doing amazing things. And we're just so thankful to be here tonight. So thank you again. And we would like to, as we wrap it up, is there, other than adjourned the meeting, is there anything else that we need to do? So we brought treats as a little thank you, and Ms. Stephenson has them. So we would like to just excuse them. And if there's any other students, I know that you guys have been sitting here as well. If families are okay, we'd like to ask them to come up, and they can get a little treat as a thank you. And we can finish our business. We would like to collect our clipboards. Mrs. Freeze would like those back. She has trusted me with those. So thank you. All right, just a quick, families, thank you again for joining us this evening and sharing your beautiful children with us, so we could see their talents. Thanks so much. You're welcome to stay. We really just only have more comments left. So with that, I'll open it up, Melissa.
I wanted to say thank you to a number of parents who came to your children, yes, and here today. Thank you.
I actually took some positive notes during the presentation by the principal. And one of the things that really stood out to me, as we've been talking in recent weeks, is about community and the community rallying around the schools. And what I saw in spades tonight was our school rallying around the community. So your student council, that was so excited to do the clothing drive and the food drive and the Valentine's for veterans. It just drives home to me how I, as a community member, need to rally around these spots. And that's a fantastic thing to do, is kids rallying around the community. I'm getting so much joy from that. So on top of that, the exercise, I just love to see that. The pride that you have as leaders for your staff and your students, the palpable, and it's been a lot of joy from your heart. I mean, we go on and on about the diversity and the data that you brought. But if you can't do that with heart, it's just doubt. So I'm very, very excited. I love where they see you do this, and I think you have a great job.
I just want to tell both of you, thank you for your hard work with Bookworms. And the board has very high expectations of our schools and our students. And to see that kind of progress after just four or five rounds is very impressive. And I know it's taken so much hard work on your part to lead it, on our TOSAs, and on our teachers to adopt something new in flight, like while they're doing it, they're running, they can do it as well. And so just, thank you. Thank you. I think it's such an important service. And our kids deserve to have high expectations of them, and then rising to the challenge and doing that. So thank you.
All right. With that, I will adjourn the meeting at 7:02.